It's five o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when his statements are out of order, to lengthy breach of personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. And I'll stand for the pledge. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have the approval of bills.
I'll move to approve the bills for March summary and the claims approval list. At home, sorry.
I just have one question, is it dumb one maybe, but what's a lacrosse monkey?
Lacrosse equipment for the PE. It was from a fundraiser that was raised a few years ago, and we're just now finally getting that money spent.
And a monkey is something that you can know.
I think it's just the website that they ordered it from, I don't know if it's the name of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, correspondence, guest public participation, and we do have some trustee candidate introductions, hopefully. Okay, and then Krista Bowles, how many people are here who are gonna be speaking, then your trustee candidate? Okay, two. Okay Krista, why don't I have you go first, is that okay? Can you keep it under two minutes?
Okay. Yep. I just wanted to speak real quickly on the record and on the video that I emailed all the board and the principals and the superintendent at about 4:30 with an email about some video that was going around TikTok that teachers were taking, or a teacher took, and his spouse, that were inappropriate sexual in nature, and just wanted to have it on the video. I don't wanna put out names or nothing, just wanted to know that it was there, and then you guys can get back to me once you talk about it and have a solution.
Thank you. Okay. Um.
Start with me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'll be pretty good. I think everybody knows me for the most part, so Stephanie Hanson, I'm running for three-year position for a trustee. So I mean, for me, I try to help out, you know, as much as I can at school, whether it's cross-country or the fun run, or actually did take over Rainier Lane, just because we were gonna, they were gonna end it, just because the gal had been running it, her kids are no longer here, so, you know, for me, it's just a lot of those kids, that was like their only time to shop for a family member, so I really didn't want to see Rainier Lane go away, so really just, I'd like to focus on, you know, getting parents back involved, supporting the teachers, supporting the staff, you know, how can we communicate, you know, with the families here, the children here, to try to get everybody involved again. I know that we haven't been able to be involved for the last couple of years, so you know, how do we, how do we get everybody involved again, just so that we can support the teachers, what are the teachers needing, so that we can kind of collaborate together? It's probably my biggest thing, especially with all the change going forward between the new school, Cal leaving, there's gonna be a lot of change, so just being a part of that, making sure we're doing it for the best interest of the kids and everybody involved, whole family, so. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm.
Jeff Meredith.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, nice to, excuse me, see you. Jeff Meredith, I worked at Glacier Bank, I've worked there for about seventeen years, born and raised in Kalispell. My interest in the board really came down to, you know, I've thought about it in the past, I've talked with Jane Wheeler, one of your past board members about it in the past, really kind of what put me over the edge this time was again Cal, your departure and the new school, those are both transformational changes that are gonna occur over the next few years, and I just felt that I really needed to be a part of that to ensure that the quality of education at West Valley continues, the quality of student engagement continues. And I have two kids right now in school, I have two more, three and five-year-old that'll be coming through, so we'll be here for a long time, and I really wanna make sure it's a great experience for, so thank you.
Thank you. You are gonna be on the ballot.
I am on the ballot, I guess I decided to do, to, go ahead and run for it, and another term, because there's that tremendous learning curve once you do get on the school board. And I've attended several of the different classes in the past few years, and have just learned a lot about what you can and can't do as a school board member, and and I think built some relationships, and like everybody, you know, I'd like to be part of the transition between the old world and what will be the new world going forward, so I'd like to be able to work with another group of people, and hopefully they'll be as great as this group has been working with. That was my thinking, and I have that for another.
I think there's one more. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I didn't think I was gonna be here, so I just didn't sign up, but my name's Megan. Signed up for a three-year term, and I was just amazed this year at the lack of desire to listen to parents, and so I thought, I am a parent, and I'm here, I'm listening, and we got back from the board.
So there's two, three-year terms, and then there's one, one-year term, and only one person has signed up for the one-year terms, so provided he still lives in the district, he'll just automatically by acclamation be in that spot, and I don't know what his name is.
Counselor.
Counselor. So he'll for sure be on the board, and then there'll be two other people. And maybe this one, we'll see. We'll see. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, is that the full list right there Stephanie, of everybody that's running? Okay, thank you.
Four people for the, for my term and for Marilyn's, and then Gretchen, who was filling in for Chad. He has one more year left, so person who took, who signed up for her, you have to designate who you're gonna, what term you want, so they can put it on the ballot, so the other person automatically will, and he'll have to run again in a year. Yep, okay. All right, West Valley PTO report.
Okay, there's a meeting tonight at 6:30 after this, I can kind of speak to it, so if anybody wants to go after this, there's a meeting after this.
All right, West Valley Teachers Organization.
I'm just gonna say that we hosted the interviews for the candidates, and they went well on Thursday. So the teachers. West Valley Teachers Organization, type of interview questions, and we went back. Four candidates showed up.
All right, Rich, go ahead.
I'd like to. I'm sorry, what candidates? What are we talking about, like the superintendent candidates, the teachers, the, yeah, that's okay. School board, okay, yeah, sorry. I was like, which one? Something's going on right now. Thank you. Sorry, Rich.
I wanted to give some information to the school board, because I'm currently on the athletic director at West Valley, and I've been looking at numbers, projections for next year, and the problems we've had this year in athletics, and my proposal is. As you can look for the numbers in here, I put this together today, it's basically, I'll just read it so everybody can see if you guys don't mind. Says I've been athletic director at West Valley School, we don't see much growth in our attendance with projected numbers all the way through twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we need to make some changes in athletics. As you can see, there's a chart there of what I believe the numbers are, the records were not very well kept before I came, so I'm kind of guessing a little bit, and I've done a much better job of keeping records about what we're gonna have. But as you can see, for, for example, if you go to fifth grade, from two thousand nineteen, twenty season, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we went from one team with an ABC, that's where it's divided into three teams, they're all together, to three separate teams. Every teams are getting bigger, we were able to split every team this year in girls' basketball to give it a try, and it was, it was, the kids were awesome, the coaches were awesome, but it was kind of a logistic nightmare, we were changing schedules daily, if any parents were on the team, I was sending out emails every day, changing my schedule, because if this happened, we need the gym for choir, or whatever, what happens throughout the year. It just seems to me that the breakdown, the teams we have in the past few years, we've tried splitting the ABC team, we've tried two teams, we've tried one giant team, but it's hard to develop any teamwork when you're switching teams altogether. It does eliminate the little playing time, but it also makes it have less games. I tried, like I tried to split, basically what I'm getting to is next year I would like to eliminate fifth and sixth grade basketball at West Valley. The reason being is that it's hard, it's hard to find games. Now the rural schools will play against us, because they're all fifth, sixth combo, and honestly, we destroy them, they don't wanna play. There's only three or four other schools that have teams, their numbers are low, not the same as ours. It's becoming logistically hard, if you look at any middle school that was starting now, or admitted school that's going now, they only have seventh, eighth grade athletics because of the amount of kids. The main part is my, my last little sentence here was right now, West Valley is a game-only school, that means we have gates, we don't have time to practice, we have games every night of the week, two or three, four games a night, we're having 5:00 AM practices. No, we need to concentrate on the program for the seventh, eighth grades to practice, work as a team, and most of all, have fun. This is the last year a lot of these kids were playing, because they started to cut high school. There is fifth and sixth grade basketball available for everybody to play, there's little dribblers or little hoopsters, which for both boys and girls, plus there's travel ball, so we're kind of eliminating a third option for them, there are options for them to play. So I'm not eliminating that, but if we wanna concentrate on the seventh, eighth, for logistics, with gym space, with referees, with scorekeepers, with referees, I say that twice, because I had to referee a bunch of games this year, it's just logistically, I would like to consider eliminating fifth and sixth grade basketball at this time, we could revisit it when we have the new school, but right now, I think it's, we're at that point where it's, we owe it to our kids to concentrate on seventh grade.
Anybody else, any other teachers? All right, curriculum director update.
Well, I'll keep it short, because I'm gonna present later about.
Principals report.
Just waiting. Dramatic, I like it. So, yeah, we're currently going through the hiring process, and the elementary, hopefully after tonight, we'll have board approval to, if people signed up, ready to go for next year. We've got some great candidates, I remember last meeting, I kind of talked to you about, you know, how hard it was, with the applications becoming, you know, so slow, and it stayed slow, but the, but the quality is really high, so that's, that's really good. I think that moving forward with everything, it's gonna be something that we have to maybe address in the future, is how we attract more teachers to the profession, you know, we, you know, it's very long-term thinking that we're gonna have to be a part of that, because we will need lots of teachers. We are also looking forward to next year's TSS process and building some student information sheets, which we started several years ago, so that incoming teachers could have more information on their students to be able to kind of hit the ground running with some of that knowledge, and then with COVID, you know, we hear it all the time, it kind of stopped, and then last year was so weird with us not really doing groups, there wasn't much to say about kids, but now that those are up and running and going full steam, there's tons we could get, try and get two for each kid, get some data on that. I was going to present some numbers again tonight, I put a little presentation together, but the numbers that are out from OPI are way, way, way behind when you look at other schools around the state. Right now, they only have numbers for Flathead County and other counties in the state, not just Flathead County, from February of 2021. So they're over a year, typically we'd like to see, you know, some numbers at least from October of 2021, if not February, but those reports, I guess, are a little slow in getting to us. But with that said, you know, it was so different and funny back then in 2021, because we saw a huge increase in homeschool kids, we saw, there was just a lot of people moving in the country at that time. Last year, you know, we saw a huge increase over the summer from states all over the country, Florida, Texas, Washington, you know, California, you name it. And so those numbers are, are kind of, I guess, taken for what they're worth, but looking at just, and I did it for the staff too, but looking at the K-five numbers, because that's the grade levels I had during that year, it was the second-largest K-five school in the entire county. So it's, it's pretty interesting to kind of hear that, I hear a lot of times, oh, I thought it was a really small school, from the road, it looks really tiny, but when you actually get in and start looking at things, it's, it's a, it's a really small district, but it's a big school, and I think we gotta kind of keep that mindset going forward, that there's things we need, and we will need in order to, you know, as people have mentioned, keep the same, I guess, quality that we want to have in our teachers, in our classrooms, and our support staff, but we're gonna have to give them the resources to do that. It's gonna take some pretty hard choices, but we're several years away from that not being able to happen, if we don't do something, so hopefully we get some good news going forward, I know that there's been some videos put together, pushed out, I think I got one sitting here, we talked, so anyway. I guess I always encourage the staff, you know, to make decisions for themselves, but with that also tell our story and share our message, because it's worth sharing, and it's worth, it's worth hearing, we deserve it, you know, for the kids too, when I say be, it's definitely all about the kids and getting.
I'm Tina Blair, in middle school, we are working on scheduling for the next year, and we've met with elementary about the fourth graders are passing up to fifth grade, and they do a great job with them and have a lot of information. I shared one sheet with you all about the placement of rooms for next year, but before I talk about that, I wanted to bring up some numbers. So in nineteen ninety-two, we used to call it the graduation program at the end of the year, now we call it promotion, because they actually get a promotion certificate instead of a rural graduation certificate, but in nineteen ninety-two, this is our little program from the end of the year, and at the program in nineteen ninety-two, I mean, I know that in eighty-three, I think there were twelve graduates. In nineteen ninety-two, there were twenty-two graduates in eighth grade, twenty-two kids, twenty-two wonderful kids. And then we jumped forward to two thousand two, in ten years, we jumped to thirty-seven, so they gained fifteen kids, there must have been some little run-on kids, thirteen years before that, I don't know, but there were, now we're at thirty-seven, we gained fifteen over the ten years. In two thousand thirteen, which is a little off of that, couldn't find two thousand twelve, eleven years later, we were up to forty-three, so they had gained six students, so forty-three kids at West Valley in eighth grade, a little bit of a lull there going on. In two thousand twenty-one, last year, there were eighty-four, so the kids fill up this side of the program and the backside of the program. There were eighty-four kids, and this year there are ninety-three kids in the eighth grade class, so there, we're up fifty. We can see that from, like ninety-two to two thousand two, we go up by fifteen, and then in another eleven years, we go up by six, and then in another eight years, go from forty-three to eighty-four, and then we're at ninety-three, so just gaining nine across a single school year at a grade level, whereas we might gain that in a decade at one point. And I shared with you our rooms, so a picture, not a picture, just a spreadsheet of the classrooms. So that puts you through the office area where the fifth grade begins, and it comes on down through middle school. The A rooms are the old section of the building, older, and B is the new middle school section, the B rooms. But you can see how, I don't know what the original plan was, but we have fifth grade classes, two of them now down at the middle school, so they have a partner, because we had more than three, we moved art up, but any pink spots you can see, we're now fifth grade uses the middle school music room, fifth grade uses that same gym, and to help alleviate the pressure that was happening down in the elementary, we have fifth grade now mixed with middle school. The middle school pieces are almost exactly where you might want them, if the state minimum is at twenty-five kids per, or thirty kids per classroom at this grade level, and we have classes coming up with one hundred, right around the corner here, and, you know, twenty-five kids per class, if they all were nice and evenly distributed, is not so bad, but at the rate that we're growing, we're looking at being over the state minimums in a very short time for accreditation, and being able to divide them out further is, is going to be quite a challenge, and so again, it speaks to the need for the bond, and I say a need for the bond, it is not a want of a new building, and I don't want the expense for all of us, but I feel like we need the space for our kids and as a society to help raise up a next generation that has great opportunities and then will be great citizens and live here with us and keeping our kids with us. That's another thing I noticed over time, is that it's not that all the names are new, not all the names are new, you can look through the years and see, but a great thing has happened, that some of our kids are staying here and living here, choosing to raise their families here. It's not all that everybody comes in new, you know, new is good too, but also sort of those families that have remained here over time. So I just wanted to also give you a visual there to see when people ask, well, what's happening there now, what about the building we just put in? That, that's what's happening in those classrooms. I do have four that I colored in blue that I call like resets, they have physical items in those classes, I don't put another classroom, hopefully in those lab-type classrooms, when they're doing their prep, because they're literally manipulating different items and getting ready for another class, but that gives you a visual if you wanted to know what's going on in those classrooms. If you have any questions about that, you can always let me know.
Is there an English class happening in the science class?
In which one? I have to. Show me here.
One, B eight, and B nine.
In. B eight and B nine, or where it says room reset, well, those are engineering, engineering, yeah, so, so don't mind me. We usually use ELA a lot, but yes, those will be the engineering classes, yeah. Yes, it could happen. And you'll see, like, the yellow is a teacher, the new reading teacher just has to move to different classrooms, don't have a homeroom, and that the seventh grade math will be in what we call the fishbowl, which is the foyer room. That will be seventh grade math, there isn't another room for the next math teacher, so that room will be used. Math, math, every day, so we need another teacher by size, you have to have another teacher, there's nowhere to put them. So, and then other ones, they have another person in their classroom, when they're on their prep, another teacher will come and teach in that space. So, I mean, you could see a look about a sudden movement like that, but I think they would rather have a stationary class and talking around, they'd rather have a stationary room that's functionable, rather than going class to class with something like math, where they have so much prep to be able to do, so that's, any other questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, mine will be kind of quick, you need to talk about the superintendent interviews, so I think that's gonna be the biggest thing tonight, is to get that kind of mission stone and what that's gonna look like. So you have all the three candidates that are gonna be interviewed, you should have all their paperwork and everything, and so if you need that or we sent you, let me know. The interview's on April twentieth, and they're at four, five fifteen, and six forty-five, I believe, if that sounds about right, I can look at that. It's every, every hour and fifteen minutes, basically, so I'm starting a phone box. And then I talked to, I think I talked to Bonnie a little bit, and Mary Kay a little bit about the possibility of including some staff in this, or, and/or either having a, a group of staff members, maybe do an exit interview with them after they're done with their main interview, so I guess that can be talked about tonight too, of how you want that to look going forward, or they can be on the panel with the board, however you guys wanna do that, it can be done either way. How, where do you want them set up, so you know, this is open meeting laws, so with open meeting laws, anybody can attend, because we'll be sending out a, an informational trail share to the parents and to everybody out there that if I have something in a paper too, that wants to attend, because it can be anybody that wants to come. They can't participate in it, but they can watch, you know, the part that where they're being interviewed, that kind of thing, so I was thinking probably doing them in the commons area of the middle school, I don't know if it would be big enough in here, just depending on how many people show up, so that might be a better place for it, to do them there, so. So yeah, have a discussion about it, what you want to do, how you want it to look. Preferences, you know, it can be either or, you know, and then you guys certainly, if you have some input on it too, staff members, if you wanna, you know, talk about that as well, so.
Yes, so what have you, what are you thinking for, in terms of, I mean, obviously, we will conduct the interviews, but in terms of involving admin and staff?
I can tell you ten years ago.
Yeah, what happened ten years ago?
Ten years ago, I walked through that door and didn't know anything about open meeting laws, so I walked in here, Todd discreeted me, and he said, I said, oh, what's going on, your library goes, oh, it's for you, that's the interview, I said, okay, well, great, there's probably thirty-five people in here or something like one of this library, the old one, and so that was what we did for that one in particular, it was a woman, one-hour interview basically, and that was it. There wasn't anything else to it, you know, so there's lots of different ways to do it.
And we had a hand, we had a few people on, a few staff members on the interview committee, but then ultimately, the board was the one that made the decision.
The board did the interview.
Yeah.
So I didn't know about that part.
Yeah.
The board did the interviews, so you could have, you know, there's different ways to do it, I've seen it where they have maybe an admin, certified staff, classified staff on the committee as well, or on the interview team, that's another way to do it. You can do it where it's just the board and have a separate group, maybe do interviews, a separate interview, and get their input from it, and use that as some information too. Yeah, there's lots of ways to do it.
And so it's just, I don't know, I mean, because, I don't know, it's gonna be late in the evening, and I didn't know if people or if the teachers wanted to have an exit interview with each one, and then we can come back the next day and talk about it. We can only go into, and we will, I'll do reference checks this week, but we can only go into closed session to discuss those privacy issues that I may be uncovered during the reference check, but all of our discussion has to be open, and when we come out and make the decision of who we want, it has to be open, so.
I think the idea of staff being in the same interview instead of an exit, I don't know, there's pros and cons to.
I think the more involvement we can have from staff and admin, the better, right, and maybe, I don't know if they can elect, like, representatives for each of them and have them at least be a part, and have them collect questions that people wanna hear. Obviously, the more people that can show up, the better, but as long as they have a representative that's here, and I don't mind them being a part of the conversations and a part of that committee, I think that's more the better.
I know we talked about that, having a representative from each group.
I feel comfortable if the principals would be involved, because they are, they are the ones that hired the teachers now, they're familiar, I mean, yeah, they go up on that, so I think that they, they get, I mean, if we have the principals involved, if they would come and be part of that. I guess I'm not too clear, would they, would they ask questions too?
Well, typically, like, I'll just ask all the questions.
Okay.
You know, and so we can. You know, and so we can submit the questions, you know, and we should, we should, did you share the question?
I just shared them views so far, but I'll show them to everybody else.
And I think we could identify and, you know, just being transparent, identify these are questions that came from admin.
Exactly.
Came from teachers, but I think, yeah, having both principals involved in that committee is super important. And then another representative for admin and one from the teachers as well. They weren't so close with the superintendent that they need to be there.
And Cal would be willing to, is it appropriate that? Well, I don't know.
No, I know. It's up to him.
Is it appropriate that Cal would be one that would be on the committee or, or is it inappropriate?
You're asking me, I'm going to say no.
Yeah.
I don't think it is.
No.
I don't think I should have any input on who's chosen at all.
He can be there if he wants, but yeah, he would not be part of the committee to hire his own replacements.
It's, but it's not like we're kicking him out.
Well, no, no, but it's, yeah. And I can't remember, I think Todd attended, Todd attended the interviews, but he wasn't on.
Do you think the teachers have a part?
Yeah.
Do they have their own exit interview or be on the, just have one interview?
I think, well, like, we definitely want to be involved, so.
Do you want to pick a representative to be kind of part of the hiring committee, part of the group that's when we have our discussions?
Yeah, I think, well, I don't know how it worked last time, but I think, I don't know if there was a smaller group of teachers that wasn't part of the actual decision making, but more of like just getting input after the interviews from a small group. And then it's the board that makes slight decisions. But I think, yeah, we would love to be involved.
Because obviously each candidate is only sitting with us for about an hour, right? And we could rotate them through having at least separate time with, with staff and that, teachers if they wanted to.
I told them that one, I called them that that's a possibility. Okay. Meet with them after the main interview.
Yeah. Did you want to have your own? Yeah, and you, and after we interview, they could go to you.
I think that would be great.
You want to do that?
Well, I would still want some questions from you that we could ask, the board could ask of the candidates as well. Because I think sometimes you will come up with questions that we maybe wouldn't. But if you want your own time with them as well, then all of you could have your own questions.
The hard part about that is we wouldn't be able to be involved in the main interview.
If we could come up with maybe a few questions that then were asked during the meeting.
I don't know, an hour probably goes pretty fast, so. So I don't know how many questions you want to have. Or if you have designated people who are here for the actual interview and then have another group who's doing the, you know what I'm saying, and then you guys all talk like, okay, this is what I felt or heard or, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Generally speaking, Bonnie, you answered your question. I wouldn't, I would say normal question, I would say no more than three minutes per question. So if it's an hour long, roughly seventeen, because you got a little buffer room in there too, about seventeen, eighteen questions half the most.
Do teachers, can, do teachers have to do it that same time? Can they interview pre, prior?
One of the gals, she's flying in at like one. I mean, so she, and she already came here for an interview for SD five last week, so she, she's kind of like, she's been traveling.
Yeah, I think we should, we do, we should be able to do it within hours.
I felt like Justin's idea of us submitting some, submitting some questions that you could look at that might help narrow that down of what we're actually after, rather than a volume of questions or concise questions. Questions, I'm sorry, I have a migraine today, so I'm having a hard time speaking. But I feel like that, that that hour could be really beneficial, that everyone could see at the same time what is happening versus separate groups in those interactions, because I think if they're interacting with the teachers, you would all want to see that too. You know, so I don't.
So I've sent some questions and I'll send them to you guys too. I've sent them to Stephanie, I think there's eighteen or so. I think maybe what would be better for the group, for the teacher group back there is to maybe one or two of you, if it's one of you two, maybe. If we send them, I, I, I'm a little worried about sending them to too many. Because then there is confidentiality, you know, that has to remain in place here too. So I have no problem sending them to like the two of you and then you can review them. Because you don't want to be redundant in our questions, I don't want you to, you know, add ones too. And then also to the administration. So maybe that would be the best way to do it, that way we have a, kind of a take your plug where they're at. So, does that make sense?
And then so, I guess I'm, are we doing, you want to do your own little interview after?
I think we'd like to give you three questions from the staff.
Okay.
That would be important. And then maybe have a couple of us have a quick exit.
Okay. Yeah. Yes.
The only thing I would caution about that is that even if you're going to have that exit interview is to make sure you stay consistent in your questioning.
Yes.
You know, so if you ask one, ask them all. Very much of those questions.
Please get the word out to people getting involved. I think the more people that can be here and see them and even if they don't ultimately get to make the decisions, I think it'll lead to more transparency when people show up and start working into some involvement.
Interview to open to public as well?
It's all open, yeah, there's no, you can't.
Would you like to, a small group of us then to meet with you at a certain time to give our?
I think maybe we should have the, how many do we want from each group? So I think we should have the designated people from admin, or there's just two of you and maybe two teachers, and then we come back and talk about all of it.
So how about classes, classes, teachers and admin?
Okay, so for, I just think I guess in a little clarity, so for the interview itself, it's going to be the five more, right? Is that correct? Okay, so you have that, then you have the exit interviews that you guys are going to do, right? I would just include, if you, yeah, I think classified should be included in that too. I would just do it all at the same time. I wouldn't have them go one place then to another place.
Okay. But she's saying then when we're all done, we have to come back together and talk about it and get their information.
Right.
Correct.
Some of them would be doing a pre-interview, would they? Are you going to catch each one after or will they immediately leave the building? You'll ask them to stay for the two hours and then leave.
Well, they'll be here for about an hour and then they'll go talk with the teachers. Just for. And then when we're all done with all three and they've done the last exit interview, then we can come together with the designated to talk about it.
That would be the only, I guess, question you have to ask, because when you do that, because closed session would be part of that. So then you'd have to decide if there's going to be a determination that night or if it's going to be the next day, because then people can come back.
Well, I know, that's what I don't. That's what I was asking.
But I probably do it the same.
Well, that's what I'm just wondering, just, you know, it might be a really easy decision or I know, well, I know for you, it went a little while and then we just kind of stayed it with it and decided that night, but.
So you know, I'm unclear about this. I, okay, so we got five of us up here asking questions to these people. Then we've got the teachers being able to ask a few questions to the people at the, to the interviewees at the same time. Meanwhile, we've got a bunch of people who are observing, they have a right to, I mean, they, they cannot say anything.
They can speak, if we make, when we go to actually make a motion, if we want to hire one of them. Yes. Then they have a right to public comment before we vote. So they can stand up and say, I don't think you should.
Okay, I see, so they're important, we'll be at that time.
Yeah.
So they'll be observing the rest of the time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, and then, but we hold our discussion among ourselves before we put it up for a vote. Will that include the teachers and the admin, our discussion?
I would think yes, because we have to get their input from their identity.
Otherwise, we wouldn't get that.
No, so they're kind of part of the committee.
So then we have the committee mates, the committee being us and the two, the two admin, the two reps from the teachers.
Yep.
That committee would sit up here and talk about.
Yep.
Okay, so then we'll talk among ourselves while it's open to the public to be observing the whole thing.
Yep.
Right? Okay, and then, and then about the time we decide to vote, then we open it up for public discussion and then the five of us vote on it.
Yeah, and there will be a point in there where we'll go into closed session to talk about reference checks, just because that has to be personal.
So the five of us will vote, so after we have the little, the open discussion, what people can present what they want, that have observed what they want, the people in the audience. After that, then we will go away and do our little privacy thing, then we'll come back and vote.
If we want to vote for.
Or, or at that point, can we?
Or discuss it, I mean, it could be, yeah, make a motion either hire or not hire.
At that point, could we decide that, that we'll do it tonight or tomorrow? I mean, we could.
If I decide, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And you can't really, it's hard to say.
That's what I'm hoping, but at that point, we're not locked in to doing it that night or the next.
No.
I know the schedule has three. I saw a fourth packet that somebody dropped out, are we still meeting with all four or are we?
We, we decided for the three. All right, yes. Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Sound good, everybody?
Is that okay with you guys?
Sound good?
I have one question, if you guys don't feel like one of the three is the one, does the job stay open and you don't?
Well, yeah, we didn't think, yeah, we didn't think there was a good enough, yeah, qualified enough candidate, then, then the board would have to decide if they want to open it up or, yeah, or try to find an interim or.
To make a motion to, to open up another.
So currently it's closed, then?
Another cycle.
Patients can come in.
Correct.
My only thought is, it's such a consequential decision for the future of our school. Don't you think there should be some time between the interview process and your selection to allow? I mean, you guys, everybody's elected officials, right? To allow, because maybe not everybody can make it that night. Maybe people need time to think to kind of allow them to digest these candidates and maybe make their recommendations through the trustees and give them a little bit more time to provide input, rather than just making that decision kind of immediately after the interviews, which might be the first time any of the community has seen or heard from these people.
Well, and I think that's what Cal was saying, it might just decide itself. I mean, I think, I can tell you, when we interviewed for Cal, we interviewed, we had like, we had like thirty applicants and we only interviewed a handful and he was head and shoulders above the rest. I mean, it wasn't like you had to really think about it much, you know what I'm saying? You, were you there? Can't remember who, you remember the, yeah, so I guess it's, it might have someone that just allows us right away or we might just be like, oh, we need to empower it a little bit more. You know what I mean?
I personally would, would like kind of that approach of giving it a little bit of time. So I don't know if it's like later that week, Thursday, Friday, having another session that we can sit in. Obviously, it's still the open meeting rules, but, and then if by chance things are amazing that night, we can just be, okay, we don't need tomorrow, we don't need Friday, let's just move forward. But maybe we should just plan on it so we have it.
Like have a different.
Just have it scheduled for something.
Schedule another day to talk about.
If it's overwhelming in five days, it's still going to be an overwhelming decision.
Right.
Just going to be positive, but nonetheless, you give some time.
That might be a question that the candidates ask you, is what's your timeframe for this? So be prepared for an answer for that, like.
They should ask that.
They should.
Yeah.
Well, what do people's schedules look like for like the rest of the week? I know I have something on Friday after.
What's it, what day is it?
It's the twentieth.
Twenty, it's a Thursday.
It's a Wednesday.
So we need to do it Friday and Monday.
Or even Thursday.
So we have to publish.
Just, yeah.
Would the second time be open as well, right? I know Thursday night is our first family math night and there's going to be hundreds of people busy in classrooms. And that's five doing things on Thursday. From five to six thirty.
I'm going to just get the next Monday.
Yeah.
Just turn this it on the weekend and then if we don't need it and we settle on Wednesday night, great, but.
If we're truly going to do what Jeff says and take some time to digest it, I think having a day after isn't, is not long enough. And maybe even have the Friday after, so not long enough, but Monday should give everybody time to be able to book it over.
Okay, that Monday.
Monday at the same time.
Tuesday.
I don't know, how long do we want to make people wait though? That's the other reason, typically you don't make people wait a week. And if these people, I mean, we only have three candidates and if they're looking at other stuff, they could be like, I'm having fun, you know what I mean?
What about Thursday, like at seven?
Or like a Friday morning too, or something like that. I don't, Friday mornings are fun for people to get up in the morning.
I can't, I can't do.
But, don't we can do Friday?
I have something else Friday night, at the FCC.
Math night's done at six thirty. So.
I mean, not post it coming in at seven o'clock Thursday night either.
Yeah.
So a lot of time for people to clear out, we can come back in.
Oh, that's, that's over six thirty. Yeah. So is anything like that? I know that.
No.
But on the other end. Is it easier? So if we decide we're going to vote on another night. They didn't have this published, so we're going to do it another day. But if we don't need that. Do you think this canceled?
Yeah. Thursday, seven?
Sure. So what time does math start?
Five to six thirty.
Okay. Okay, so we could post that Thursday at seven will reconvene to kind of deliberate unless for some reason Wednesday night we have a wow and we're like, whoa. I heard.
Yep.
Okay.
I knew that was going to go well, so that's, that's all I have.
Okay, so we know what we're doing?
Cecilia, you got all that?
Sure.
And you could probably, I would post it all at the same time. Yeah. Okay. Um. Why did we say seven? Yeah. Oh, where is chat? Chat, can you be there at seven?
Yes, I can. Yep, I'm actually in town both of those weeks, so if you want to do the week after, I'm available as well.
That was it, right? For you. Right, on to action items. So consideration of new hires. And there's a bunch of.
Yeah, so you can do it one of two ways. We can go through them individually or we can, we can take them in mass, if that's what you want. Depends on what one of you guys want to support, so.
Well, you're recommending.
I'm going to recommend all.
Yeah.
So.
All together, yeah.
Okay, so we do have, we do have one of our new hires here. So Chris Keller is going to be our new librarian, part-time middle school elective teacher. So thanks, Chris, for coming, coming through with Kyla. And so he's going to be doing that. And then also the rest of them there, Katie Gastet, Andy Alvarez, who's already on staff here as a paraprofessional. Katie Holman, Joel Ailes, Katie Post and Anita Hillis. And that's, I think we have about, oh, we have about three left, I think, a special ad and a.
Two special ads, a sixth grade and a seventh grade, multiples from that.
Actually, we have about four left, so. Good, knocking them out pretty good, and we got some, like Richard, I think said, we got good quality applicants too for these. So we may not be getting the numbers, but we're getting good quality, so that's, that's what we want. So I'd recommend all of those.
Or most of them. Do they have tickets to that?
They do. They do. Questions. Yeah.
Pretty sure that his are too.
They are.
Yeah.
Motion to hire candidates, one through seven for their teaching positions.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? I?
I.
Consideration of student attendance agreement for one student that moved to Evergreen Crossroads.
It was just one student that moved in March to Evergreen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Oppose? Consideration of resolution for county election department to run election. Okay, let me go back. Did the most current one? Maybe I didn't. Oh, yeah, there it is. I was on the old one. So consideration of. New math curriculum.
Okay, so I believe you all got a copy of the proposal. I wanted to just give you a quick kind of background and let you know kind of how we evaluated and how this all worked out to where we're at right now. And so so of course, we review curriculum regularly by state law for accreditation. Our curriculum review doesn't always mean that we're going to adopt new curriculum. But this year, our Go Math that we adopted six years ago is going out of print. We are creating a new Go Math for K five that's coming out this year, but they have the Intu Math that we're going to talk about today that they came up with in twenty twenty. So we needed a a new curriculum. We researched evidence-based curriculum. We looked for things that were recently published, so try to stay within five years of publication. And how they meet our specific needs. So we have acceleration in the middle school, we have algebra. We want to make sure we have good interventions for our students who need that. And then we also just consider what are other schools using that they may have already reviewed and found helpful. Our team, we had one teacher from each grade level. So you'll see there we had Mrs. Quawka, Mrs. Vannick. Dankers, Beckett, woman, hello, Milky. In the middle school, we had Emily Black and Sarah Tegler. And then Tanya Jewett, Richard and Tina also needs to help us with that. K five looked at Zern, which was K five only curriculum. And Intu Math and then Vision, which were K eights. Plus Algebra. Sixth or eighth grade looked at Carnegie, Intu Math and Vision and Open Up Resources. And then last board meeting, I shared with you the rubric that they used for all of those. And we watched presentations from each curriculum developer. So when I collected the rubrics, then I put their scores in for each grade level. And it just kind of shows. But I might have to look on yours again. But this is just the ratings per grade level. Thanks. And then as you can see from what points were possible, it scored a seventy-seven percent. Other ones we looked at were in the sixties, fifties, or even forty percent of what the teachers liked about them. And then this one I found actually the best as far as determining what's going to be helpful at West Valley. So this is across categories, how each grade level teacher, and they met with their grade levels, so they combined and helped each other. What they thought about each category. So category one was the content that was presented. Category two was the organization and structure of the curriculum. Category three was the student experience of the curriculum. And category four was the teacher support. We had, that was one big factor in this is having gone through Go Math. We got the curriculum, they came here for about an hour to show us how to get online and use it, and that was all the training. And there's not a lot available for the teachers after that. So we kind of had a rough start with Go Math. This curriculum has very amazing features that I can tell you more about. Category five was assessment. Which looks pretty low, but they all scored fairly low in assessment. And I think it has to do with one just kind of the way tests are written and that we're standards-based grading and to try, I think there's some training involved with how to use those assessments for standard to be screen. And then six was the technology or the online platform and those were also available. The online platform was available to the public. And unfortunately, I did not get any public input, so I don't have
any information. What was with the fifth grade with the low scores?
I mean, yeah, we all met and we talked about these low scores and. It's fifth grade here. No. And they got together and they reviewed as a team the Intu Math. But they didn't do in, or to do in Vision, they got together, they scored in Vision higher, fourth and fifth grade scored in Vision higher. They felt like the assessments were better. And so there were just a few differences in that. All in all, everyone on the team, and there are some on the team that are welcome to. Carly is here. Do you have anything to say about how the meeting went or how we?
It was, it was really interesting actually to sit and kind of pick apart these curriculums and a lot of them were similar to what we have. And so we were trying to figure out what is best, but assessments was a huge thing and looking at the differences in the assessments that they have in these curriculums and what we have now. So yeah, I think, I think it was a good process because we had to pick it apart, take so many parts of, and then come together and score, so.
Yeah, service is mine here. I did invite them all, but.
I think you were right about the grade that there was, the assessments were huge.
Yeah.
They were all like multiple choice or, I don't know, in.
Yeah, well, and some of it was a little confusion. We all wrote down where we found our evidence. And so other teachers had found assessment evidence and scored higher that the fifth grade raider didn't see. So we have to talk about those things as well. And then some teachers went to Whitefish and observed teachers teaching the Intu Math. I couldn't find an envision closer. I mean, I think they would have to view that. But even their experience was different between grade levels. They've had it for two, this is their second year. And just depending on which teacher you got and how invested they were in the curriculum versus bringing in their own thing, they had different experiences even there. So, yeah. So, but it was good discussion, like you said.
So just that, one thing that we realized is very important, it's the online portion, I mean, going through COVID and having to go online and remote learning, we're like this big. And it doesn't mean that that's all we're going to use, that it needs to be good. That's one thing that we wish we want into that.
Yeah. So these are some of our really big wow's about the Intu Math. So it definitely, if any of you were parenting through COVID and trying to use Go Math online, is not very user-friendly. This is a completely different platform with a different company behind it. There are a lot more teacher supports for day-to-day instruction. So if a substitute was to come in and they needed to work on a lesson, there's a lot more. You know, wording and look fours for teachers as they're teaching. And then the lessons are more appropriate for primary students. Because we know that kindergarten did not adopt Go Math because of some of that, but this one is more has more appropriate lessons for primary and a lot more text to speech is just there all the time. You don't have to turn it on for certain students and things like that. It's available. I think that goes up through. So we have the classroom-based instruction with traditional workbooks. So it's not like whole shift, the kids aren't going to be online all day. That was one big negative with the Zern curriculum. People really liked it until they realized it's like eighty percent online. The kids are going to be on the computer all day. So this is more, you know, you got your workbook and very hands-on with manipulatives. And then the supplemental instruction and intervention is available online. They have a distinct algebra preparatory curriculum in the middle school. Built-in systems for differentiation and with in the elementary and middle school doing intervention for students who need who need that or to help the teachers while they have them in the classroom for differentiation. So they're not missing class time to get an intervention. They can get that help built into the lesson. I really like the professional development. They have support available twenty-four seven. There's a whole teacher's corner with on-demand webinars or sign up for live webinars. And then they also, in this proposal, they'll be here for two days in August. So they'll spend one day with half the teachers, another day with the other half. There's a whole day of great training and then eight thirty-minute sessions throughout the rest of the year per teacher. So every teacher gets one-on-one coaching all year long to help them implement Intu Math. And they'll come back for two more days during the year, whenever we can find those days for the teachers. Yeah, so that's the bottom part, the coaching and in-person training, which as teachers, we're looking forward to seeing more people in person. So the cost proposal is six years prepaid. You'll see that it also includes waggle and waggle is their name for their supplement kind of intervention type of program that we have decided would be good to use in first grade and fourth grade this year. Have them pilot it and see how it goes. It is quite an expense just to implement it for the whole school for the six years, but especially if we don't know for sure how much teachers are going to use it right away. It's not part of the core curriculum. First grade and fourth grade are a little more spread out. And when we think about you know, online support that the teachers already use for math, second and third grade have reflexes and some things that they use regularly and have used, but first grade is a bit lacking and could use it. And then fourth grade is just far enough apart that the kids see it again in a couple of years rather than kind of getting bored with certain things that they see all the time. So for supporting currently, the proposals for nine hundred and ten students, thirty-three teachers, it does come to forty dollars per student per year. So I think that's a good way to look at it because when I everybody sit down. I did, you know, through working with the representative, the original proposal was about sixty thousand more. And so just working on fine-tuning our numbers of students and teachers and having waggle be implemented just in two grade levels to start. And that more could be added if it seems super beneficial to the kids and the students later. Now, if you just have any specific questions about the proposal itself, any of the pages, any of the items.
Sound like implementing for, for those that need assistance and stuff was pretty easy, how about for advanced placement stuff? Middle school probably easier, but how?
Yeah, well, and the differentiation, yeah, focuses on the intervention, but it also is on students that are ready for more. So sometimes we think of moving a kid ahead by just moving up into the next grade level quicker. But actually, this has the differentiated lessons that will just take them deeper into that, that topic at their grade level, the higher order than K then, you know, more advanced. And so that's built right into the curriculum, every lesson.
Differentials huge for teachers because I think that's the hard part when you're trying to teach.
Oh, you're trying to like search and rumble. It's nice when it's built in. So that forty months of student includes workbooks. Yep, that'll include every, all our workbooks for the six years.
Fourteen thousand dollars shipping to get it all here.
We got new chemistry books just for the two high school. So what we're paying for a lot of teacher support here.
Yeah.
And student.
And students.
I mean, and we're paying for for some online stuff, but we're anticipating our inter- intervention stuff, which we know is occurring right now. We have to straighten this to be needed.
So the teachers are very, very, have become very good at using those online interventions as maybe in in stations in the classroom. So it's like fifteen minutes. It's not like forty minutes sitting on here. But they're just another resource in your main station. Thank you for this.
All right, we need a motion.
I make the motion to purchase the new.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Is this, is this what the parents are going to be looking at on Thursday, Carrie? You know, there's a parent math night. That's not the same thing.
No, the math night is where families come in and get fed and then go to their students' classroom and learn and play games and then take those materials home to play games with their. So it's nothing to do with this.
That's separate.
Yeah.
But you call it math.
It's family math night.
Okay.
Because they're learning math games.
Okay, that they take home. It has nothing to do with their math curriculum.
Well, I mean, it's, all of the games chosen are along the same standards that the students are working on.
Yeah. Since we're on that topic, is there like an online portion, like to go home? I know there is for school, but like for the kids to practice at home at all?
Not in the family that one. It's all.
No, the Intu, the Intu.
Yeah, yeah, they would, the kids would all have their online presence just like they do now, way more user-friendly. But they could get in, not just for like the day's lesson, but for practice.
I have one struggling with math, so that would be super helpful.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Consideration of resolution for county election department to run election.
So the Northwest Mass Group has met and it's about nineteen superintendents and they're looking at the possibility of for, well, it's a revolution, a proposal for the county to run our elections for us. Now, you still have to pay for it. You don't, you know, the the school district has to pay for it. So I took this on for the, for the Northwest Mass Group and went down and talked to the election department and got the information. And the reality of it is, this is the starting point. It's the resolution. This goes for the election department, but right now, the staff are talking to them. They don't have the manpower nor the machinery in order to be able to do this. Because you got to think about, there's nineteen different districts, basically, I think, that would want to do this from Kalispell all the way down to, I don't know what the smallest one would be, but whatever the smallest one would be. And so, and elections aren't always held at the same time necessarily, so scheduling and different things like that. So what basically we have to do, this is the starting point. This would get us, you know, hey, we're interested in this, we want you to do this, and here's what they're going to say. They already know, no. That's, that's the starting point, though, remember I said. So what we have to do as, as superintendents is to go to the county commissioners and then ask for, you know, this to be something that we can do or that they can do. And in which case, they're going to have to, you know, maybe not all have them. And in which case they're going to have to, you know, maybe not all have them hired all the time, but have people be able to be workers in the election office, have machinery that's updated and can handle the, the elections. And again, the school districts still have to pay for it. So just like we do now, when we do it, we still pay for the service. They provide the consistency in one place doing all of the elections. So it would take away some of that. I don't know if there is any angst over it, it never has been, but you know, each district doing their own elections. We wouldn't have to do that anymore if that's the case. Now, it has to be in by June 1 in order for this to even be considered. And again, it, it won't happen this next year. It can't essentially. So we have to en masse, all of us show up at a county commissioners meeting to say this is what we'd like. Here's the proposal and here's why we think it would be beneficial for us to do this. So, and we'll do that at the next commissioners meeting, I think, for the one after that. So if, again, it's probably not going to happen this, this time, but we have to start somewhere. So that's what the starting point is.
You balance out pros and cons of doing something like this?
Yeah, so the pros of, of everybody going through the election department is it's consistent with just that election department. So they're, you know, they're hiring all their own people, their own judges, their own, everything's being done there. The machinery is the same, all those things that they're going to do. As opposed to where you, I don't think it's been a major problem necessarily, but it's a time commitment, you know, for each district to do it. You know, because now we did it, we used to do it where we stuffed our envelopes, you know, and everything. That's, that was a huge time commitment, just that in itself. We now have InstePrints do it and they do all the stuffing and the mailing amount and everything. So, but it costs us to do that, you know? So before we just did it ourselves. Some districts still do that, you know, Kalispell, I think, I think they might, so I'm not sure 100% sure. But you know, they've gotten, is it like 40,000 voters, I think, or something like that? We've got 3800, I believe, or somewhere in that vicinity. So, so it lends itself to some consistency, I think mostly, but it also, you know, it doesn't put the burden on us to do all of that work in order to do it, you know, and make it happen. So, and then you don't have to get the judges here and you're getting judges here at night, you know, like, oh, so we did the board elections and things like that. That's all done there.
So where do people vote?
It'll still be a mail.
And they could still just bring them up here.
Yeah, you can do either or.
Do you have pricing?
You know, I don't have the exact pricing. It's not going to be much different than what we're paying now, you know, so.
Bigger counties, Missoula County, Galatin County, they all run their elections for the schools. Flathead's one of the bigger counties that just does not.
And that's the reason why I contacted them too. So I contacted Missoula County and got some information from them as well. And there's 14, 15 districts in that county as well. And, but they have more people, they have six or seven people in their office, they have more machinery, you know, that kind of thing. And they, they also do scheduling with every one of those districts like Harry. Cause sometimes you're not going to have to run an election. There's some years where you don't have to do any at all, you know? And then other times you might have to, sometimes, you know, and every district is out there. So they pre-schedule that all of it down so they know, like when they're going to need more people, you know, to make that work. So it's a process, it's going to take at least a year, you know, probably to make it work. But this is, like I said, this is kind of just a starting point. This is so they know that we're interested in doing this, basically.
So how many of these will they be receiving from the other 19 school districts?
How many of them?
I mean, how many of them are going to, are going to submit this like we are?
We get a straw poll and I would say there was probably 17.
Oh.
Yeah. About all of them were there.
Several clerks have already gone to the commissioners in previous meetings. Recently, I think, maybe the last couple, trying to talk to them and, and get, get it out there that we're looking at this.
It's all null and void unless you do this before June 1st. June 1st is the cutoff to get the resolution.
My only question was that, how does it alleviate for the clerk? Does the clerk feel secure with that process then? Does it alleviate work here at the local level?
Yeah, I do because I'm brand new to this. And so it's, I mean, it's a very scary process for me because I am so new. I mean, I have a calendar that, you know, comes from OPI and every day I like go through it to make sure I'm meeting deadlines and, you know, everything, make sure it's posted in the right places. And it's, it's very time consuming. Thank goodness for InstePrints, otherwise I'd probably be stuffing ballots right now. 4,500 of them. So yeah, no, I think it's, they have, I mean, they do have the equipment. They have the tabulators that are on those, count them versus the hand counting. Everybody has their opinions on that, but I think, yeah, I think it's definitely worth. Yeah.
And it's, you know, Missoula, Galatin, it goes off pretty smooth. Not that ours haven't, just some of the groundwork that you have to do to make an election happen.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of summer maintenance contract, Tony Smith.
Those of you that have been here, well, most of you have been here every year, right? So we've heard this spiel before, it's going to be nine times probably. We get our bang for buck from Mr. Tony Smith and it's well worth the investment in him working in the summer. We have a shed that we have to put up over here that's going to go up this summer and that's going to take some time. We also, if you notice coming in this morning or this afternoon, maybe the snow's still on it, I don't know. But there's playground equipment that all has to be assembled and it's going to take some time, you know? And so Tony and Phil would spend most of the summer working on those projects alone. So I would highly recommend Tony Smith for summer help. And he wants to.
Motion to approve Tony Smith's contract.
Okay, with a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Consideration of summer grounds keeping contract for Joe Sova.
So we did this last year too, but we have two young men that did it. And so this year we have a maintenance, a custodial person that works part time here at the school during the day. And he expressed interest in doing the grounds maintenance this summer. And I would recommend Joe Sova for that.
I know that we have Joe Sova.
And that would be, I'm sorry, and that would be 16 to 20 hours a week. So it's not a full 40.
That we have Joe Sova as a groundskeeper and contract for the summer.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, tuition rates. For 22.3.
So the tuition, I think, if we go to the, the 1253, is that what it is? 1253 is what you can charge per year for student. We're at 1100. My, my recommendation would be to keep it at 1100. And we are not, we are not, as you guys know, we are not taking any more open enrollment students, except for the ones that are already ground bonded here. So that, that would be my recommendation is to keep it at the 1100 dollars.
We don't really need money, we need space.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the tuition rates.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Consideration of CSCT MOU.
So we talked about this at length, probably a couple of months ago. And we were looking into it and deciding what we wanted to do. And we decided the best thing to do is just to keep it, keep Alticare as it is for this year. And that being signing this MOU and, and which is a document that basically says we're going to stay with this. And so what we have to do is, is pay a certain amount each month. And I don't know if you have that number there. Do you have the number for that? Okay, so it kind of varies a little bit depending on the billing. So we pay, let's say it's $6,000 a month for the service. We send it, we send the claims into OPI. OPI sends it to BPHSHSHS. HHS, I can't say it. Anyway, so they reimburse us. So what we can't do is take it from federal money. So that's the, that's the kind of catch. So we're, we're still going to get the money back. It just has to go in a different, a different place, basically. So we decided that was best for everybody because, you know, with a couple of months left, it's just better to keep it consistent. Alticare does a great job, these kids. We didn't want to, we didn't want to switch it to the S-BOT model. Thank you, because it, it changes how you can deliver the services. And right now it's working really well. It does, it does mean with the S-BOT model that you don't have to report the same way necessarily. But we figured for the rest of the school years, that's the way to go. We aren't losing anything money wise, it just takes a little bit of a new way, sort of.
So you can't take the money from federal, a federally funded account?
Correct.
So it'd be, can you put it back in the same account that you had?
Because it comes back as federal money, basically.
So would that create an excess in one account then?
Not, not really.
What we'd have to do is pay it out of our general fund initially. And then when it comes back, we'd have to put it into like a miscellaneous fund. And then we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to do something different out of that miscellaneous fund then. So we can't transfer it back to the general fund. So it'll, it's kind of a.
Kind of a shell game.
Yeah.
But we're not losing anything.
No.
They're not. Dipping pieces off of that at OPI or DPHSHS along the way?
Yeah, I think so. They made it work, let's put it that way. So I would recommend that because mostly just because it's the service for the kids, I think, more than anything else. And we'll, we'll do whatever we can to make that work.
I move that we set this CSCT MOU.
All second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I just have.
Oh, go ahead.
Maybe, as I was reading this, I was just wondering like who's, who's taking what along the way of this path, right? Is there schools that do this in other ways and self fund these programs in different ways that are cost, more cost effective or?
Well, this is so new because we, before with Alticare, we didn't pay anything. We got to give them the space. That was really about it, you know? And so, so this is brand new. So what, like, I believe Kalispell's went to the S-BOT model. And some of them, Big Fork has stayed with the CSCT, you know? So it kind of just depends on what fits for you, you know? With Kalispell was a substantially bigger mill company, you know, for them to be able to put out, you know? So for us, it isn't quite as much. Then we can move it around a little bit differently. Well, not differently necessarily, but it's easier, I guess, for us. Yeah.
Right, makes sense, thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, and our last action item, consideration and possible action on declaration of vacancy on the board of trustees pursuant to Montana Code 23-308. And this just came up, so, and the code is on there for you, but you can't, once you're an elected official as a school board trustee, you really can't be removed. There's just a handful of things that can vacate your position. And one of them is, it is F on their fails to attend three consecutive meetings of the trustees without a good excuse. And this has nothing to do with, you know, Chad, Chad's a great member, but he has missed the past five meetings. And so we just, we wanted to talk about it and talk with him just to see, because, and that's one thing about the people who are actually running for office, that, that is really important that you are here. And the law just says three consecutive meetings. I know we kind of follow three consecutive regular meetings, but then there's also been two special meetings. And it makes it hard if we don't know if people are going to be here because we won't have a forum. And there have been times where you didn't know people weren't going to be at special meetings. And I was calling people, trying to get people so we can actually do the business of the board. So we just wanted to talk with Chad about if he's going to be able to be here more consistently and if there's anything we can do to make that easier. But yeah, go ahead, Chad, you want to address that?
Sure, first of all, my apologies for missing meetings to begin with. It certainly was not my intention. If you go back to January, I missed that meeting because of a delayed flight. I was simply in the air when the meeting took place. The one in February I missed, I was assuming that they still had a link, that we'd have a link to come to. And I went to the agenda, there was no link. Shame on me for not seeing it earlier. I emailed Cecilia asking for a link and unfortunately she didn't see it until the meeting was over. So missed that one. And then the next one had full intentions of making it. I had a work meeting that ran about five minutes long. And when I clicked the link five minutes later, I, I wasn't able to get in. So I totally understand the meeting's got to start on time. So I unfortunately had a work issue there. And then the two special meetings, I simply couldn't make just because of the time of day that they were at. So, you know, going forward, I, I do plan on making the rest of the meetings.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I think that's what we needed to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely, I mean, Chad's been, I mean, this is, he's completing his first year and definitely with the, how the board's basically probably going to be brand new next month. I mean, we really do want to keep people, you know, because you, it, it takes a while. It takes a couple of terms to actually really learn what the work of the board is. But I guess also for the people who are potential new members, it's really important that you let the board chair or the superintendent or the clerk know, just so we can make sure we have a forum to do business. And if you can't make it, you know, just, you have to miss meetings, but just not consecutive meetings. But that is a Montana law, just so everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, I was actually surprised by the Montana code having vague language of, without a good excuse. Seems ridiculous to me, especially when a lawyer wrote this, right?
Well, and it's up to the board to decide.
Yeah. And the one thing I realized, one of the special meetings, I was trying to log in, had the wrong password or the wrong link or whatever, is that we just need to be better at getting each other's cell phones and especially Cecilia, so we can get into these things when we need to. So I think that probably would have helped Chad in the last meeting too, just having a contact to reach out to and get in.
Yeah. And I know I had my email open thinking maybe he was going to email to let me know, but, and it's been hard too with the pandemic because we were doing fully Zoom. We never did Zoom before, they were always in person. And maybe if someone had to be gone, they would call in and we'd just have the phone out. But now I know Chad's traveling a lot, so it's hard to do Zoom for one person. Cause if we were all on Zoom, you know, all the technology, the feedback. So yeah, I mean, if people can be here in person, that's really how they're supposed to be, especially since we can all do that now.
Yeah, and on, on that topic, I do plan on being there in person. I have one more meeting where my rotation will keep me, I'm going to actually be in Texas next month. But after that, my rotation is that I'll be back in town. So what happened is we are a sawmill company that I work for. We had a mill burn down in Arkansas last June. And being the head of engineering, I basically have had to be here two week rotations. So I'm here for two weeks, then home for two weeks. And so just the way it has landed, it's kept me away for each one of these, unfortunately. If the meeting was later in the month, I would have hit all of them, but it just didn't work that way.
And I know Chad mentioned the time of the meeting. And you know, we had our meetings at seven for years and years and years. And then the board decided they wanted to have it earlier. And that's something the new board can decide. I mean, if they want to change the actual time of the meeting, not, I mean, I don't know, you can change the day of the meeting, you can change. You might only change the day of the meeting, but you can also change the time of the meeting. But that's something that you could do as board also if you wanted to in the future.
And Chad's going to be able to come to the superintendent interviews on the 20th?
Yes, I plan on, I, I will be here. I fly home on Friday. So my plan is to be there for all of those interviews and the follow up.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you for letting us discuss that. So, and we don't have to take action, obviously, that was just on there so we can discuss it. So I'm assuming nobody wants to take action?
No.
No, okay. Yes, you have a good excuse.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, on to information items. February cash reconciliation, February fund 115, fund 182, my active account bank reconciliation. Uh, February cash reconciliation, February Fund one fifteen, Fund one eighty-two, my executive account bank reconciliation. Is for everybody to look at. And then we also have staff intending to move lanes on the salary schedule for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Yeah, there was just one we forgot to put on the list last time, so she's on there now.
Then. Our audit. Our fiscal year twenty-one audit results.
You wanna talk about that?
Um, so I can briefly, I don't know a lot of it. So this was in November of twenty-twenty, so it was when we got the new software. Um, Serena was fairly new. Uh, there was some COVID. What was it, the governor's relief grant is what it was, and so it had to be spent by December of that year, and so, um, she had taken some. Teachers, um, like COVID leave, and transferred it from where they normally get paid from the general fund. To use this uh, grant money for, so she did it twice, so it was a double posting. Um, the auditors caught it, um, we went kind of back and forth, because like I said, I'm new, I had Cindy looking at it, Serena looking at it, just to make sure that. Everything was correct. Um, and unfortunately it was wrong, so, um, we fixed it. Um, the auditor helped me fix it, we posted it, once we posted it correctly, then it threw our general fund over balance. So that was kind of another little ding there. Um, but going forward, it's fixed. And watch it very closely, very closely. Because I've lost a lot of sleep over it, even though.
Well, as you know, Cindy's been working here too, Cecilia, she's, she's a watchdog, she's, she's on top of it, so.
So Cindy never had any findings in her. Yeah, it was, it was a hard day.
Yeah. We just had to fix it, um, at this point, um, we haven't heard if we have to pay it back, that's a possibility, but. I think the auditors are just, I mean, they're expecting to have a lot of errors with this grant money, and so hopefully it will be.
But they still gave us, is it unqualified?
Yeah, it was a qualified opinion, I think, is what they called it, yeah.
So basically, they gave us the same. Rating, but there were just a couple findings that had to be added, so.
Which is the job of auditors, is to find things, so.
But they use, they don't ever find.
Ding for sixteen hours in the fourth and fifth grade, so they were looking for stuff.
Okay. Um, and then evaluation of business manager, manager, is it that time already? That's when we do it in May?
Well, it was in April the last couple of years, but I didn't see it in time, so.
When did you start again?
October, end of October.
Six months on my there.
Yeah, six months on my there, still here.
Well, and so for the clerk evaluation, it's the same as the superintendent evaluation, because the clerk, we are. She answers to the board, so, do you have a copy of that evaluation? The blank one?
Yeah, I can get it, I mean, I know it's somewhere.
And it's another one of those wonderful, Justin's gonna love it, it's one of those great evaluations that you.
Like her skill.
That we all fill out.
We'll write more.
So anyway, you can send a blank copy out to everybody, in the same drill, we all fill it out, I can compile them. And then I can go over it with her, but it'll, someone else will have to. Go over it at the meeting in May.
Is it? Is it fair for us just to ask her to briefly, before we present it, to, to just give us the things that she'd like to work on, and she's doing well?
Is it fair to ask her?
Yeah, just one of the things that you're doing well, one of the things that you would like to work on, and then.
Yeah.
Is that, that is always super helpful on our side, just to say, yep. Wonderful thing, so.
Yep.
So reflective of this.
Yep. And it'll be the same closed session to discuss.
After the given, after the meeting?
Yeah, it'll be at the end.
With all the new school board members, we will never have seen.
So, because we'll have to close the session with this board, and, and then open and reorganize the new board, is that correct, at the next meeting?
Well, it kind of depends, because Jack Aginberger, he has so many new board members, he has to square in, a lot of times he comes in and he squares people in. Before the meeting even starts. Which is what happened last, now there is a law that we don't have to square people in for sixty days, but we've never done that.
So I don't think it's very fair to have that. An evaluation of Cecilia with a bunch of people who are just new on the board.
Well, but, so you guys would do.
We do, I'll go over it with her, and then you'll just talk about it. And then, and I don't even know that it has to be improved, I think it's just, it just has to be done.
Oh, okay.
So. And, you know.
And it's in closed session.
Yeah, that's. And I'll go over it with her first.
Right, that's good, yeah.
I, I just don't want to, so you gotta be out there, they won't, yeah, just like everything.
I think we got that one.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I think that was the last. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
Stephanie has been on this board for twelve years, and that is a big event. Regardless of how people feel about her, twelve years. I mean, I appreciate.
Just so you know, it's a thankless job, people, the people that are coming on.
Twelve years is a long time, which has been consistent, and she's seen this whole through growth and through new superintendents, and I think that she deserves our gratitude.
Done.
And celebration.
Still have a couple more things to do.
You still have to open the next meeting, so, right?